Twenty-first meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission to order. The first order of business is to do the roll call vote. I see, it looks like we have everybody here. So why don't we skip the roll call and just say thank you to everybody who made it out on this chilly evening. With that, why don't we do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. I will note that we do not have minutes for the November 16th meeting, and it looks like the revised minutes were posted for the 19th. So, and it's otherwise a pretty simple meeting. I think we'll be spending most of our time just getting a quick update on some of the informational items from past meetings, but I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I had one set of comments, or just one minor comment on the minutes from the 19th, just to suggest that the language be changed, that we move to recommend approval rather than that we move to approve, since that is our role. But other than that, I had no further comments on the minutes. Were there other comments on the minutes?
I have a couple. In the paragraph about top of page two, Mr. Hendrickson stated he didn't believe that road standards would apply because this is a special use application and not a rezoning by State Code 170-10. So there is, there is no such, if you look up State Code 170-107, that's, that's not it. I mean, I don't know whether he misstated it.
We don't know if he said that or not.
Or, I'm guessing he meant the ordinance.
Oh, maybe not state code, but our, but our code.
Yeah, and I don't know what he said. I, or I can't, I didn't go back and listen.
Maybe we should just agree to check that, and if it's his error, I think the minute should reflect his error, but we should probably confirm that that's what he said.
And then on Mr. Makelis, I know, I know that you went back and checked it, but the sentence doesn't make all that much sense, and I'm guessing that's what he said, right? Thank you.
Well, I, I think, yeah, I, I think he was kind of referring to how he used, that he, that he thought those tourist homes were otherwise to be low-income housing. So the, I mean, if you sort of read that into it, then I think it makes more logical sense.
Okay, great.
But those may have been the actual words. So I, I mean, I read it a couple times myself and didn't think there was anything to change necessarily.
I think his, I think his name is a K-E-L-A, M-A-K-E-L-A. And I think Joko Barsky has a Y at the end of Barsky. Very small changes.
I think you're right.
Thank you. Any others?
If there's no other changes, I would make a recommendation, or I would move that we adopt these minutes with a few spelling changes, confirmation on Mr. Hendrickson's statement, and what was it that you mentioned, Gary?
Change to?
Oh, that we recommended approval rather than approve them. And that's my motion to adopt these changes with those, or adopt these minutes with those changes.
Is there a second? Thank you. I wonder, any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have no items before us this evening for a public hearing, but since we now have a public, I will hear, I will open the public comment period if you are ready. If you wouldn't mind, do the usual bit.
Okay. You're gonna hate this hour, I have no else.
Okay.
Ron, I want to have some, I'm here to talk about the sign ordinance. And I spent the weekend going, basically line by line, through, through what, you know, what you've got at this point. And I found, I found a lot of, you know, points that need to be addressed. But then in the process, I came upon this information from the League of Minnesota Cities, which deals with sign ordinances and the First Amendments, and it has to do with, I mean, it's the fact that it's a federal issue. So it doesn't make, you know, a difference where you get the information from. We're getting good information on how the right ordinance that deals with the federal requirements we need to take a look at. So that's what I did. And I just wanted to go through it briefly to, you know, make some points here, and at the same time, I'll make points I found in the ordinance.
If you could focus on what's in our ordinance that you think doesn't comport with this, I would prefer that to having you lecture us on the contents of this, if we could kind of keep in that direction.
Well, the point is that, yes, I'm going to use this as, as the basis for the comments that I'm making on what we presently are proposing.
Thank you.
So, I mean, number one, I believe I'm correct in understanding that our approach to this new ordinance is that it needs to be contract, or content neutral, which is...
Consistent with Reed versus Towne Gilbert, certainly, that's what we've been striving for.
Correct. So that's, that's where I look at it. And going, you know, on First Amendment principles, we know about that. I'm assuming you all know about content base and neutral, or content neutral. But going to the commercial speech versus non-commercial speech on the second page, it's a, it's a two-way street. And what happened with Reed and Gilbert was, of course, the decision was that you have to get equal, equal time or equal availability to both sides. It's not, you know, it's not, it's not one way. I mean, the commercial...
Both sides being, you know, both sides.
Commercial and non-commercial.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is. So we're dealing with that here. And the next thing about this is that it's plain, simple language. It's not judicial wording or whatever. And, and when I read it after going through it, and I feel like I haven't done this before because I haven't been involved in zoning issues since I lived in Virginia Beach forty years ago. So I, I do have a background here. And looking at this, I thought, wow, this is great, because it's like you can read this in, in a short period of time, six pages, you can get a really good background that takes your, your opinion and what you're doing as far as necessary changes. Let me go to page three. You have to have a state statement of purchase, which you have done, although the one, the one thing I would say in the, in this statement, you call it the statement of intent, but is that there is nothing in there that addresses the concerns of the business community, in that signs for, you know, the most part or whatever are put in place by the business community, and they're necessary for business communities to be successful. So when you're putting together a sign ordinance, you have to have this in mind, even though you can't now make specific references. But, but that it's, it's important to the business community in Rappahannock, that they be able to have enough signage available that their businesses can be successful. So that, that has to do with the first part of the statement. Substitution clause is a legal thing, severability there again, that's, that's a legal thing. And there's, there's, and this one's from Minnesota, and there's an election season preemption that's mentioned here, and quite honestly, I didn't have time to investigate whether Virginia has that for election signs, or whether it has been changed as a result of Reed's, so we'll go by that. But then we get to the thing that is prevalent through all the court decisions across the country, in, in the federal courts or whatever, it's the time, place, and manner regulations. And that's what the ordinance is all about. So we have to look at what, you know, what we're putting in our ordinance, and basically take each and every sub-factor and everything else, and look at time, place, and manner, and see if this properly applies, or whether it's going to create a problem. And there are a number of areas that, that, that this, this comes up in our regulations as we're proposing to change them. And then the, the, the one part that also I found really interesting, which is on, it's on page four, provisions to avoid. And this was, this was written by, you know, legal folks or whatever, in plain English. But the first one is unfettered discretion. And it says cities should avoid drafting ordinance to provide discretionary approval by, they use the word city staff, but administrative staff or whatever. And we, we have some, in, in the ordinance that we're proposing right now, we have some issues in that area, because there is...
Can you say an example of that? Because I don't think for you.
Yes.
I think we do.
Yes, we do.
But I think it's for the smallest signs. It's also in the timeframe, in that with the, particularly with the temporary signs, there are a hundred days, but the zoning administrator can, at their discretion, extend it for another a hundred days. And that, that jumps, you know, that appears in several places in the ordinance. And ordinance that gives staff discretion to grant or deny have the potential to favor some messages or messengers over others. This is true whether or not an abuse of that discretion occurred. Sign ordinance should have transparent and objective permit requirements. They should take the decision to grant or deny ministerial as opposed to subjective in nature. And so that's something I think we need to look at, is that, that's, number one, it puts pressure on the zoning administrator to make decisions that are, you know, courts have found that this can be challenged. And, and there's going to be a lot of, if we put this thing through, there's going to be a lot of permits coming in that she's going to have to make decisions on, and we don't want to put her in a position where, you know, it's, it could, you know, it's going to end up a court case or not case or whatever. So we need to design it such that it's based strictly on place, time, and manner. And that's, that's concrete, and it takes out the discretionary issues. Other area here is over-defining signs. She's, cities should avoid drafting ordinances in ways which non-commercial speech inadvertently gets treated less favorably than commercial speech. For example, some cities have run into trouble by defining a sign as advertising, which we have not done. The ordinance allows signs as defined. The ordinance, by its definition of signs as advertising prohibits all other types of signs, and we're not going to do that. Another thing else that we, I did not find in the ordinance is include procedural protections. Cities that require permitting should include certain procedural safeguards in their ordinance, such as specifying the time within which the, they use the word city, will grant or deny a permit. Keeping in mind judicial preference for broadly in the response, and a requirement that if the city denies the permit, the application has to, has access to prompt judicial review. We do this on special exceptions, we do this on special use permits. The wording is not in the sign ordinance, and it needs to be there. Common sign ordinance issues. This starts out with off-premises, billboards, which the billboards, I think, are not well addressed in this new ordinance. In the old ordinance, basically, they were out in 95. They, they were supposed to be gone. That was never enforced. And now, in reading the new ordinance, basically it says the same thing that it said before, except that they remove the 1995, to remove the 1995 records. But those signs, as of 1995, were illegal under that, under the present sign ordinance. And it's never enforced, but because it wasn't enforced, it doesn't make them any less illegal. So when it comes around to our new ordinance, and you're going to require permits for those, if somebody comes in with a permit for a billboard, are you even going to consider it because it's illegal to begin with? And, and that's, that's not effectively addressed in the, in the, proposed ordinance. Another one is flags. There is reference to flags in, in the new ordinance, because there was reference to flags in the old ordinance, but basically what they're saying on flags is, a flag is a flag. It's a piece of material attached to a pole or attached on one side, whatever, and that's the manner. And if you start putting exclusions or whatever, in which we have in this proposed ordinance, you've crossed the line.
But our definition is a piece of cloth or similar material typically oblong or square, attachable by one edge to a pole or rope, and used as a symbol or decoration. This includes pennants.
And keep reading.
That's it.
This is where I took the same bit earlier, but I would prefer, since this is a public comment here, let's just listen and...
There's nobody here. Let me, let me grab my...
Yeah, if you could just kind of bring it to a close and, I mean, we appreciate the handout, I think it's valuable, we have had a lot of these references. If there are parts of our ordinance that you think don't meet this, I would, I prefer that you focus on those, those of our ordinance, and, and, you know, that you feel are off from this, and sign this specific reference, if you don't mind. I understand the value of the broader opinion, but to the point, I know we don't have a big meeting, but you have been going for 12 minutes, so we could just kind of bring it to a close.
Yeah, that's, okay, I'll leave. This is ridiculous. There's nobody here, you're having a meeting, I mean, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm here as, I'm here as a private citizen living in Jackson District. I'm also the chairman of the BCA. I have a certification for BCA, which gives me a background in this. I've taken a lot of time to go through this because I think there are things that are going to cause the county problem. I'm trying to present those to you, and you're telling me I'm taking up too much territory for other people who want to talk.
No, I'm asking you, sir, I'm asking you to focus on our ordinance, not on this paper that's was pressing these...
I'm referencing this in, in going for our...
Okay, but there hasn't been a single specific reference to our ordinance work yet.
Okay, let's go to the ordinance. Do you have a comment on it?
I mean, if I, if I could be so bold, we're still working, you know, very intently on the sign ordinance. And I requested, I mean, not to get ahead of our agenda here, that the supervisors have comments in writing back to me by the January meeting. So this is an ongoing process, and, you know, we don't have the advantage of having the county attorney here tonight to address some of your concerns, which some I think are valid concerns, some we've already addressed in working through the sign ordinance, but it's just hard to always be present for everything we discuss. But my suggestion would be if you could join us at the board supervisors' meeting, some of your concerns would probably be addressed. And if not, we will try to address them.
I think that's additional helpful information. To me, you've given us the point that we may have too much discretion given to the zoning supervisor, and you've talked about whether we're differentiating different types of flags. Those I think are very helpful. If there are other sections, I'm not asking you to necessarily reference the precise verbiage, but I think if you will focus on those parts of our regulation or our proposed language current working draft that are in violation of some of these principles, that's the piece that I think is...
Okay, I'll listen to this instead.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, actually, I was, this was my original plan, I thought more, you know, to back it up to...
Well, you gave us this, which is helpful, I appreciate it.
Okay, so going to the sign ordinance then.
Yeah.
Line 108, freestanding signs. Line 120, pole signs. They're the same thing, the definitions, you, in the ordinance, you refer to freestanding signs, and you refer to pole signs, but in actuality, they're the same thing. In fact, in the freestanding signs, it says advertising pole or oblong sign. So, so you've got a problem there. And, and the wording, then that wording goes throughout to the ordinance, and you're, you're making references to requirements for freestanding signs, and you're making references for pole signs, but in actuality, they're the same thing according to your definitions on...
Thank you for coming on freestanding versus pole.
Okay. Next one. Let's go to, this is on between 152 and 153, because the definitions are listed alphabetically. You have no definition for video signs. And they are reality these days, you should probably have a definition in there. They, they are a form of animated sign, but they are actually video screens that are used now for advertising. So in fact, you should have a definition in there. Under, so I'm going down to 166, which is under permit, permit exempt signs. You have memorial tablets or signs and historic markers. What happens a lot these days is with automobile accidents or whatever, people put up memorials in the public right of way on the side of the road. And it's, you know, I understand why they do it, and the meaning of it, but it can get out of hand, and if you have nothing in your ordinance to deal with that, then you can't deal with it. So there should be something in that area that private memorials, sadly, I mean, you, they're, they're not, they're in the public right of way, and they, they can't be allowed because otherwise they can be everywhere, and they're on, you know, there's nothing you can do about it. So, I mean, that's not trying to say that the intent of the people that put them up is wrong.
We got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now, going to line 170, under flags and emblems or insignia of, this is, this is the carry-through on what Steph said.
Yeah.
Flags, emblem, under, these are permitted. Flags, emblems, or insignia of the United States, the Congo of Virginia, Rappahannock County, other county states, foreign material, excuse me, foreign national, the United Nations, personal organizations, which this nation is a member, vice president, or president, vice president of the United States, religious groups, civic organizations, service clubs, historical flags. You left out business associations, which are the Sperryville flags. And by putting all of this in there, you are crossing the line on...
I really wonder why we are going through this without the benefit of legal counsel. I mean, that's who we really need to depend on. A lot of this is boilerplate language that he picked up, that, you know, we should be able to depend on. So while I appreciate your comments, we can't give you feedback on it tonight from a legal perspective without the benefit of our board being present.
I'm not asking for feedback.
Yeah, to me, this is a common question, and if you, and, and what I would request, and I, I think, well, I'm perfectly happy to listen to more of this, but the most helpful thing would be, if you had, it looks like you have these in writing, would be to, to give those to us in writing, and that would be much better than, you know, our trying to take the notes in real time, but...
Okay, but feel free to... And I can, I can go along with that, but it's, it's, I believe you're getting to the point, we're getting ready to send it to the consulting firm for their analysis.
It's that, at least two more stops before it goes to the consultants.
And those would be?
The board supervisors, then back to us.
Okay, my understanding was that it had gone to the board of supervisors, and it come back to you...
It did, and we're getting the feedback from the board supervisors. I've asked for that for the January meeting, and we expect to get it back here in January. I've asked for it in writing from my peers in the board supervisors by the January meeting. So we should take action on it here at this point, and then we will need to review those notes and make changes that reflect the concerns of the board supervisors before we would, we would shop around to a consultant.
Okay, well, my, you know, my intent on this is that rather than wait till the public hearing, which we all know, well, the public hearings, that that's sort of the, the final step before you...
Yeah, I'd like to be clear that I appreciate what you've done, and that you're giving us this public input. I would just like it to be in its most efficient and applicable form. And it looks like you've got written comments, and you're now reading them to us. And you're right, we don't have a long meeting tonight, but I'm not, still don't know that this is the right way to best handle your input. We would appreciate them, and...
I write in the public comment when we're...
That's right. And, and we're, we're listening to you, but we do like to, you know, we generally have some, some time limit on this, and I'm not, if you're, if, if you're addressing this tonight as though this is some kind of working session with you on the sign ordinance, and I think that is taking the idea of a public comment a little further than the intent. So if you wouldn't mind taking another few minutes to wrap them up, and if you have additional comments, we would love to have them.
There's many.
Okay, thank you.
There's many. And the, if we're going to put this ordinance together, let's put something together that's going to work, that, you know, we're not going to have to go back and change or whatever. And, yeah, it's hard work, and, and you've got to go line by line, and...
Absolutely.
And apparently that hasn't been done at this point. And one other thing that I've noticed in going over it the other day is there seems to be more that's been deleted in the sign ordinance than has been added. In particular, I'll finish up with this, and I'm going to go away. Hay bales. That has been the biggest thing that you've put in here. And what you've done is the, you've identified the fact that they are, you know, it's signs imperial or whatever, but what you put in is on the, on the, on the numbers and the size, you can do 25 hay bales. 25 hay bales are five feet in diameter, so that's 120, the potential for 125-foot-long sign. If you do the square footage, it's almost 500 square feet. And if you put it up in a position where you can use both sides, which I believe in the, in the square footage requirements, you can use both sides, and it doesn't count against you, that's almost 1,000 square feet for, for a sign. That's the biggest, the closest thing you can come to that is in, in the commercial zoning, where you might be able to go to 200 feet. So why are we putting something in there that's going to give that, that ability?
Well, I suggest you go back and listen to the tape of the hour or so that we spent discussing that line by line, if you really have. That is a... if you really have, that is a legitimate question that you have. I would suggest you start there, and you can get some of that. But in the meantime, please, please bring your comments to a close.
Okay. My, I will bring my comments to a close.
Thank you, Dave.
You also say in the hay bale signs that they can be non-commercial only. So a farmer can put up these hay bales, and he can put farmer's four and whatever he wants on 25 bales, 500 square feet. But he can't put hay bales for sale. That would be, that would be a violation. And so he can't promote, you know, as a farmer, he can't promote his business using hay bale signs. He can only promote the non-commercial things.
Thank you for that. And we look forward to getting the written comments.
I would, for the written comments, too.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
I gather, since there's no more comment, there are no other public comments. So I would like to close the public comment here. We have no new business to cross or old business to cross.
I think Mr. Fletch had one public comment here.
Mic him up.
I would ask for the record that perhaps that we go through the couple of these items that we've been kind of waiting for and anticipating. First being the Berkeley Group diagnostic report.
Yeah.
I gather we have not received that. I don't know if Ms. Smith or Ms. Summers has any further update on that other than that we are still waiting.
Last night, we were still waiting for the joint meeting. Still waiting.
But I think the joint meeting was to be scheduled when we got the material back to discuss.
And we always sort of knew it would be after the first meeting there.
Okay.
We were trying to get on the schedule, so when they had it, when they had an opening that we could get it.
So there's no update as to any change in that? It's just we were maybe, some, the discussion of having that meeting later in 2022 was probably inconsistent with Berkeley Group's timing all along.
I mean, I thought we were shooting for November, December. We knew they were busy, and so it is what it is, I guess.
Okay. So we do have the zoning ordinance amendment. I believe this is something that's somewhat, you know, stuck in its current state because we've discussed it several times and haven't found a way to revisit it and revise the language to eliminate all the obvious unintended consequences of concern. So I believe when we get into a cycle of working groups, this will be our working meetings in the coming year, and we'll take that on. Draft sign ordinance. Ms. Smith, I believe you alluded to this, but perhaps you would, for the benefit of the other commissioners and the record, summarize what happened to the board supervisor.
Sure. At the December meeting of the board supervisors, staff, Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff and I presented the work to date on sign ordinance to the supervisors, and explained to them the background of the work, and did not go through it in great detail, but presented the ideas that were behind it and the foundation for it, and kind of set the stage. And then I did shoot an email to my peers on the board after and request any comments or concerns in writing by the January meeting of the board supervisors, with the intent to review those and bring that back to you all in January. Whether I be the appointee, or the alternate, or someone else here on the commission, that you all be able to resume your work.
So, and thank you for clarifying that. I'm not sure that that step was clear to me before this conversation. But it seems very likely that the supervisors wouldn't just say, "Thank you very much", and push it off public hearing. But it, you're, it's pretty clear to you that they will come back to us with further feedback?
Well, they may, and they may not. You just never know. But when you present something at a meeting, sometimes you talk about it, and people have feelings about it, and reach out to you, and you have an opportunity to draft something and bring it back to this body. So I would just say, I know the wheels of government grind exceptionally slow, but they also grind exceptionally fine.
I understand.
So...
And, you know, to the point about this public input, I mean, I know that was a little awkward just because of the way that was going down. But I do think, it's not to dismiss the comments that were raised. I am quite confident, given the nature of the discussion that got us to where we are, that if we went line by line through this with some of this, we would continue to catch this.
Sure, we will.
Especially if we've let it rest for a while. So I would say that we would like to schedule, and if we get written comments from Mr. Mackel or anyone else, I feel like we would want to have another round, maybe to consider the public and our own reflections in addition to whatever guidance the supervisors returned to.
Sounds good to me.
I'd like to say this. In the very beginning of this ordinance, I had a talk with Mr. Goff about the ordinance that he presented in front of us. And basically, he said, "All the Ts are crossed and the As are dotted", and that was very little work needed to be done on this. And that it was legal, it met the intent of the law, and it should be a fairly simple task for us to go through it and review it and come up with some results. So I think we spent a lot of time on it, and it was very meticulous in particular on addressing the things, and we did a lot of changes to it. And, you know, the board of supervisors can have comments, and I think their comments should be somewhat checked by Mr. Goff and Mr. Curry, who are the experts, really the experts on this that we have in house, and the Berkeley Group. And I think that, you know, we might be going down a path of overanalyzing this. And I think the public hearing will be very beneficial to what the public has to say and what their feeling is towards it. And that might be, that's a very important thing. So I just hope we don't just spend too much more time on this thing.
Well, I understand. But I also think to say, "Our lawyer has reviewed it", therefore, comments about the legality should be somehow discounted. I don't think that's really where we want to be either. I think we should take any of these comments that are raised, people questioning the legality of some of these items, and with Mr. Goff's input, make sure that, you know, that he maintains that view. So I think the process is working. It is the usually messy, slow, fine grinding that we do in this line of work. But I just want to make it clear that while that was a little awkward, I don't want to dismiss the input. And, you know, I think some of these items, at least on the face of it, seem right. But to your point, I do think, for the most part, we should turn these matters, these questions of the degree to which it does or doesn't comport with the legal challenges in the hands of our...
Well, I just don't want to go on a path where it's going to be next Thanksgiving and where we are now.
We should be done in April or May at the latest, but...
We often said that about the comprehensive plan, too.
Well, we did get there.
She said, "should".
We did get there.
She said, "say will". She said, "we should".
Well, maybe I'll be back on here. We can all work through it together in case deadline. I would just add, to echo our sentiment at the board meeting, it was very clear and really clear, and made clear by staff to the other members of the board, that this sign ordinance was an attempt to align our sign ordinance with current expectations through legal processes, like go buy more dogs and read the Gilbert Supreme Court decisions to really clear it up and make everything time-zending in size in particular, rather than arbitrary as it had been before, or possibly construed as more arbitrary as it had been before. And what Mr. Goff and Mr. Curry really attempted to do during the exercise was capture what's already going on in the community and make it an accurate reflection in the ordinance of what's going on that is suitable for our county. So it was a lot of work, and I should be thanked for their continued efforts.
I think that's enough on the draft sign ordinance. And I think we have our continued list of activities that I would like to see us go for again with a series of work sessions in the coming year. And I think the best thing we can do at this point is look at that with the board as configured in January, and, you know, where we will also take up the question of leadership in this setting. And that's, the next meeting is on January 18th. And I believe that's all we have before this evening.
Have you moved up for a motion to adjourn?
I am.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.